This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for June 1st, 2020. And I would remind you that, as always, this meeting is being conducted entirely via electronic means and not at City Hall. So may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Kreschel.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Present.
Treasurer Brenner. Carson here. City Attorney Lenaman. City Attorney Brenner.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I'm here.
You're sorry you're here?
You can see you're trying.
City Administrator.
That's not what I meant.
I am here.
Assistant City Administrator White.
Here.
Police Chief Torano.
Here.
Finance Director Dolstrand.
Here.
He will be momentarily.
Deputy Public Works Director Kukler.
Here.
You can call on Ron if you need.
And Community Development Director Mensah will be here shortly.
I'm here. I'm muted.
All right, good.
Good.
He found the room.
And Mayor Bremel.
I'm here also. Thank you, Emily. We'll do the pledge of allegiance as we've done in the past. I will say it out loud and ask you to follow along silently to yourselves. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome again. We're going to start this meeting with a proclamation honoring our 2020 graduates. There have been so many heartwarming instances of the community celebrating in unusual ways with their graduates because we've been barred from doing the usual ceremonies. I congratulate all of you who have made the extra effort to make this a special time for your families and your graduates. And we just wanted to formally recognize the fact that this is an unusual time and our graduates still deserve to be recognized for their excellence, their achievement, and their opportunities that are coming up. So here is our proclamation to the graduating class of 2020. A proclamation to recognize the value and celebrate the achievements of students graduating in the year 2020. Whereas the graduating class of 2020 has experienced the dramatic interruption of their educational and social lives due to the novel coronavirus pandemic. And whereas these unprecedented circumstances have prohibited typical high school graduations, year-end activities, and celebrations. And whereas these graduates deserve their achievements to be recognized by people within their communities and beyond. And whereas the 2020 graduates have persevered and risen to the challenges before them and now commit their future service to the military, higher education, the trades, and other gainful employment, setting them on the path toward responsible citizenship. And whereas the class of 2020 will be our future leaders, innovators, creators, motivators, and role models who will continue to influence our community long after this crisis has ended. And whereas the City of Warrenville is exceedingly proud to acknowledge and support future successes of these graduates. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Warrenville acknowledges that the graduating class of 2020 has excelled despite enormous challenges set before them and are worthy of great commendation from their family, friends, and the community. On behalf of the City of Warrenville, I, David Bremel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, offer heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to all the graduates and their future efforts. And you can give a virtual hand-clapping salute to our graduates. Very good. We'll move on then to the part of our evening that involves citizens' comments. We will now hear any verbal or written comments from the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please announce yourself with your name and address. Speak slowly and clearly so we can capture your information. Once we have everyone wishing to speak, I will call on you one by one to proceed with your comments. Do we have any email comments for this evening?
No, we do not.
We do not. Those would have to be sent in before the meeting, and that can be sent to info@warrenville-il.us in the future for anyone who would like to email comments. Okay, do we have any people who wish to speak?
There are some callers. I'm not sure if they're in the public.
Okay, how do we know?
Can you ask if anyone wants to do it?
Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this meeting at this time? Okay, once we conclude the section of our meeting, there will not be another opportunity for the public to comment. So we are going to move on. We'll go on to the section that has official and staff comments. I have several things this evening. First of all, I'd like to recognize that it has been a very difficult time for our city, for our metro area, for the state, and for the nation recently. While the coronavirus pandemic is ongoing, one week ago, we witnessed the tragic death of George Floyd in Minneapolis, followed by days of protests. Then this past weekend, a number of people committed violence and looting, seemingly for criminal intent and unrelated to any peaceful protests. I would like to assure the community that Warrenville has remained peaceful and safe during this time and that Warrenville's professional and well-trained police personnel are ready to address any problems that might arise. So I would ask Chief Torano at this time to give the public an update on what's been happening and what our preparations are. Chief, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that we have done in Warrenville is that we're in constant communication with our law enforcement partners, those being other local municipal agencies, the DuPage Sheriff's Department, and also the Illinois State Police. We are part of the Illinois State Police Intelligence Network, which has an acronym of STIC, where we are able to get intelligence briefings on a daily basis. What we have done is try to communicate to the public through Facebook some of the issues that are going on in other communities. And also, we have taken preparations to make sure that people's First Amendment rights are protected in the event that they decide to engage in a peaceful protest. However, damage and destruction to property, violence, or putting other people in danger is something that is not tolerated. That opinion has been upheld by the DuPage State's Attorney's Office. So what we are doing now, at this point, we have had no problems in Warrenville very thankfully, is to make sure that we have a presence of police officers on the street. We are using saturation patrols to make sure we keep an eye on things and, again, monitoring the going-ons of what's going on in other communities and make sure that we respond appropriately. So at that point, I would just like to remind everybody to please be safe. If you see any large groups of people gathering and you think that there may be an issue with that, please call 911. We can investigate it and take whatever appropriate action may be necessary. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Okay, Chief, I understand that we have some proactive activity at the Target site tonight. The Target closed at 2:00 PM this afternoon, and their entrances are closed to protect the building. Can you give us an idea what's going on there?
Yeah, Target made a corporate decision to close at 2:00 PM today. They will also be closing at noon tomorrow. They closed at 6:00 AM tomorrow. We have an officer down there that is positioned where they can keep an eye on the establishment because it's on a main thoroughfare of deal going through our community and Naperville and into Aurora. Additionally, we have also limited areas of access by putting up some cones and barricades. And that's basically a preventative measure to make sure that people would not take a random opportunity to go in and do any type of damage. And those will be moved in order to make sure that there's no obstructions to the public when they go back there to shop tomorrow. And my understanding is Target's going to open at 6:00 AM tomorrow instead of 7:00.
Okay, great. Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
You're welcome.
Couple of other things. In conjunction with the Phase 3 of Governor Prisker's Restore Illinois Plan, on Thursday, May 28th, I signed a supplemental emergency order that allowed food and beverage establishments to install and begin operating new or expanded outdoor seating areas beginning May 29th. Included on tonight's agenda is a proposed ordinance authorizing this new temporary permit process. The Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the whole meeting scheduled for June 8th, that would be next Monday evening, has been canceled. We have a couple of openings on commissions. If you are interested in serving your community on one of our commissions, please consider volunteering for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission or the Environmental Advisory Commission. We have a term open on each of those commissions, three-year terms that begin May 1st. If you need information as to what the requirements are beyond that commission and what the commission does, please let one of us know, and we'll make sure that you get the information that you need. But we do have two openings. We'd love to fill them with concerns and involved citizens. And finally, my comments say the Warrenville City Hall and Police Building will reopen to the public on June 15th. Face coverings and social distancing will be required, however. And at City Hall, only the Manning Avenue entrance will be open. The hours for each facility may vary, so please check the city website for any updates. And then finally, of course, if there are ever any questions about what's going on in the city, we are here to answer those questions. Call the city, email us. That's the best way to get the best information, and we are eager to pass along good information. So we'll do our best. And that's all I have for this evening. So we'll go to the clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of Warrenville in Bloom, some good things happened in Warrenville today. The hanging baskets are up, the bridge planters on Warrenville Road are up. And last Saturday, we had a good group of volunteers plant the planters along the Prairie Path and Stafford Place and in front of City Hall and a couple of other places that I go and out by Family Foods Mall. We did a lot of work out there. So I hope that these flowers will put a smile on your face as you go by. We need to smile about something. And again, thanking the city for the hotel funding that we received that makes this available to us. And we're glad to keep doing this. Hope we can next year, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, and thank you to all the volunteers that were out there. It was a beautiful day to volunteer.
It was awesome.
Couldn't have been better. Treasurer, Larry?
Who is on today?
Thank you. And we'll go to the alderman. And as we've done in the past, we'll always do each individual alderman to give them the opportunity to say what they may have to say and share with us. So we'll begin with Alderman Ashauer.
Just glad things are starting to open up again.
Very good. Thank you.
Getting back to normal.
Alderman Berry.
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bavir.
It is all the graduating seniors, good luck. And we did a little parade the other day with Bluesmobile and made 30 stops at 30 different kids in town that graduated. So it was very nice. Congratulations.
Well done, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to Fred and all the people. That sounds like a super idea to visit those graduates. So I did not know about that. So thanks for sharing that. I just wanted to build on what you said, Mayor, and what the chief said about the violence that's going on. Just, you know, you hear on the national news about Aurora, and today in the local news, they talked about Fox Valley Mall struggling. So I just, I guess I want to say thank you to the chief for some of the updates he has done throughout this weekend and the day to just, in my case, to reassure me, at least, that's all I can speak for, on how things are being handled and what's being done. And I just, I just smiled and just kind of said, Warrenville's taken care of. We're in good shape. And I just felt very grateful for the police force and for the quality of it in this last weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. I have two items. The first is that the Fermi Lab Community Advisory Board meeting, that was last week, we met virtually, unlike usual. And I just wanted to let everybody know that there are some really amazing resources that Fermi Lab is putting up online that are available to the public. Everything from science activities you could do if you're teaching a child at home to Fermi Lab Jeopardy, which includes questions about the art and the buffalo. I think the Ask the Science videos are going to be a great resource for people. A lot of the arts and lecture series, they're trying to reschedule. And it'll all be virtual, it'll all be online, it will be free, unlike the normal arts and lecture series where you have to buy tickets and go in. So they can have a bunch of increased capacity. But they do want everybody to register in advance so that they can get the appropriate link out for those broadcasts when they happen. So check fnal.gov for any of that information and links to their education information and arts programs. Secondly, I want to talk a little bit about an issue that's already been touched on generally, but more specifically about the pandemic crisis that we're in right now. This does feel like one of the most difficult times that we have faced as a nation in at least my lifetime. The tragic events of the last several weeks have affected us all deeply. Our social impacts, mental and physical health impacts, economic impacts are all having unfortunate effects on people's well-being. And it's really no wonder that tensions and division are running high. We in government need to empower and respect all voices. So everyone is experiencing negative impacts right now, but those are not equal to share. And we all need to be particularly sensitive to the needs and the health and economic needs of the old, the sick, and minorities in our community, as well as our essential workers around Warrenville. We need healing and justice, and we need to take every chance that we can to offer our help, support, encouragement, and kindness to every single person in our community. I see so many people say things are going to get back to normal, and they can't wait for more reopening. But this is not over. More than 100,000 people have been lost in America to this pandemic. But sadly, they are not going to be the only ones we lose. So if it's all right, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the well over 100,000 people that we have lost, their loved ones, and everyone who's in pain at this difficult time.
Absolutely. We will do that.
Thank you.
Alderman Kreschel.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Widener.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. Attorney Lenaman, I just wanted to reemphasize the importance of some of the community planning measures that have taken place, and particularly the trails and open spaces that we're surrounded by. We certainly see them in high use, and certainly they're benefiting people's mental and physical wellness as we go through these turbulent times. And I just, you know, am so appreciative of all the work that we've done as a community to create a walkable community, a bikeable community. And I am just so appreciative of that from a personal standpoint. And then every day, I witness the value of it as I see streams of people going by on the trails and biking everywhere. I just also wanted to mention that there's a interesting program that mirrors nicely with the Mayor's Fitness Program. It's being sponsored by a lot of the local businesses, the bike shops, and it's called Go By Bike. And what they've realized is that so many of our errands every week are less than five miles. And they're encouraging people to choose a bike or your feet over driving your car. And then taking a picture perhaps and posting it on your Facebook page or sending it by email to other people and invite them to join you in the effort of getting out and enjoying these trails and networks, pathway networks that we have in our community. So it's a fairly simple thing that we can do. There's millions of car trips that are under a mile that are taken every year throughout the United States. And it's a good way to, you know, save and improve the air quality that we have by just maybe taking a trip or two by bicycle or by foot every week. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson.
No further comment. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move then to the city administrator. John?
Thank you. A couple of quick notes. Just again, thank you to all of our city staff for all of your efforts, patience, commitment during this whole pandemic, whether you're working at home, working on-site, working intermittently. They've been doing a great job. And it's just, even every time we think we have a handle on a new normal, everything changes. So they will start to, many employees will start coming back to their workplaces, at least on a limited basis, if they haven't been already. Police and public works have been already on-site all the time. But many of the administrative folks will be coming back in the next week or two as we prepare to reopen. I also want to just thank the police. The council, Mayor and I, we're all getting updates through the weekend just about what's going on in the region, the chief and his crew. Our police personnel have been doing a great job and being diligent to prepare and just take proactive measures. We hope that nothing bad will happen, but they're doing the best that can be done right now to address those things. And finally, Finance Director Dolstrand is working on preparing updates to the financial reports. And every time we get a handle on what's going on with that, something happens like the Target has to close for multiple hours on busy shopping day. So we will keep working on those. I anticipate, I was actually waiting for my review right now, and I actually anticipate, I believe, we'll have an update for the council at the next council meeting to give you where we are with revenues and expenses this weekend at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney, Brooke?
Hi, everyone. As you're all aware by now, the city has been holding this virtual meeting and its past virtual meetings pursuant to authority granted by Governor Prisker's Order 2020-07, which temporarily suspended certain requirements of the Open Meetings Act. I just wanted to provide an update that on Friday, just this past Friday, May 29th, the governor issued a new disaster proclamation and two new executive orders, the second of which, 2020-39, reissued an extended executive order, 2020-07, which allows municipalities, including the city, to continue to hold these virtual meetings.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion? Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the June 1st, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry. Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as presented. We have one set of minutes that need to be approved also this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion also?
I move to approve the minutes of the May 18th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call again. Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved from the 18th, 2020. I'll now read the consent agenda for this evening. 6A, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and pass Resolution R202020-34, extending the duration of the March 16th, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the City Council. B, accept staff recommendation and approve revised employee recognition policy. C, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission slash Zoning Board of Appeals' regular meeting held on February 20th, 2020. D, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission meeting held on February 13th, 2020. E, receive and file report of invoices paid up to May 27th, 2020, in the amount of $78,322.96. And F, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before June 15th, 2020, in the amount of $110,040.80. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a couple of sectors there.
Yep.
Okay, motion and a second. May I have, again, a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda as presented has been approved. So we'll move on then to the regular agenda. Could I have a motion, please, for item 7A?
This is Alderman Berry. Go ahead, Alderman Goodman.
This is Alderman Goodman, and I'd like to make a motion for item 6A to accept the staff recommendation, waive the second reading, and pass ordinance O2020-24, authorizing the City of Warrenville staff to develop and implement an auxiliary, auxiliary outdoor seating area program and issue temporary use permits in accordance with such program to facilitate outdoor food and beverage service during the COVID-19 emergency.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bavir. Very good. And a motion and a second. And if we could have then our Community Development and Economic Development Director, Ron Mensah, give us an update on exactly what this means. Ron?
Okay, good evening, everybody. The, under the city's normal zoning ordinance provisions, any type of outdoor seating and service facilities associated with the food and beverage establishment is required to go through a formal review and approval process with both the Plan Commission and City Council. In this case, based on the conditions and kind of the hand that's been dealt to all of our restaurants and drinking establishments, I felt it would be appropriate to try to expedite the review and approval of outdoor seating facilities while the indoor seating opportunities for those facilities is being limited by the state and social distancing requirements. So as part of that process, we worked closely with the city attorney, evaluated the ordinances that have been developed by other communities. We had some outreach with some of our own businesses and came up with the program that's included in the agenda backup material. And basically, it establishes an administrative process, which is, I would say, from my perspective, extremely flexible for the businesses under which they would be able to obtain an administrative permit from the Community Development Department to temporarily install outdoor seating facilities at their businesses or expand. at their businesses or expand existing outdoor seating facilities at their businesses. The temporary permits would be valid for up to 120 days. They could be terminated by the city council at any time and they could also be terminated sooner than 120 days if the governor issues another executive order that eliminates the restrictions on indoor seating. That would be the presentation.
Great. Okay, we will again go through the Alderman, give everyone an opportunity to either comment or ask questions of Ron. And we'll begin again with Alderman Ashauer.
I support it.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Berry?
I also support this and I think it's a very good idea that we help to have these restaurants open up and have our residents have some place to go to enjoy themselves for a few hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Berry. Alderman Bavir?
Yes, I support this.
Very good. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I also support this. And I think most of the other communities, I'm understanding from this backup and talking, if people are doing it. And so I think it's, it's a fairness issue too for business owners to be able to do this. And I'm not sure how you enforce it, but I'm sure everybody's enforcing it the same way. And I don't know if there's penalties or whatever, but I do think it's, it's a positive step.
Great. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I agree with what Alderman Berry said. I think people need this right now. I think our businesses need this right now. I think it's a good idea. I've discussed it with a couple of people, mostly on bond, of course not my space, but they had questions about parking. So I wonder if Director Mensur could address that concern. I know that a lot of the businesses being closed, parking lots are generally more available right now, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the thought process. There is going to be some judgment that's going to have to be incorporated into the review and approval of these projects based on the knowledge and experience staff has and understanding for that matter of what type of parking demand has existed at the various facilities throughout town. We're not anticipating that anybody's going to be looking at taking up large areas of parking lots, but there will be certain, certain occasions where there will be a handful of parking spaces that will be converted into this type of seating for a temporary period of time. We don't anticipate any major problems. I would say in conclusion that the way the permit process is set up, if there are unforeseen negative impacts that are created as a result of the approval of one of these administrative permits, the permit is structured such that we do have the ability to go back to the permit holder and require adjustments to the operation to minimize those negative impacts.
That sounds like a really good plan. Thank you and good luck administering this new, untried program. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And thank you, Ron. Alderman Kreschel?
Yeah, no, I agree with everything that's already been said. And I think, I think it's a good, it's a good thing. Especially there, I see here, there's no fee for this permit. Is that correct? That's correct. Awesome. That'll help businesses too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wyder?
Yes, I strongly support this, this effort. I think it's a great way for the city of Warrenville to invest in some of its small businesses. Anything we can do to help them at this time will be beneficial to them. And it always seems like parking spaces are always kind of designated in numbers for the worst case scenario. So it always seems like there's parking spaces available even when businesses are operating at their busiest times. And I know in some communities, as part of a long range planning effort, they've developed what they call vest or pocket parks, where they will combine some of the very small landscape islands that oftentimes just get stripped bare of their landscaping during the winter months and filled with rock or gravel. As time goes on, it would be interesting to see if we could create combined areas that would offer, you know, a more pleasant area for the restaurants to operate by utilizing some of the excess parking spaces and making it nice for the customers and the business owners by offering, you know, relaxed sitting areas with plantings and, and natural elements that could also help reduce the amount of heat that's escaping off of the, the parking lots and so forth because of the black asphalt. So I'm, I just think that this, this can be a thing that we can, you know, move on today and then hopefully develop more of in, in the future just to make these nice pleasant areas for the business owners. It might help them to get back on their feet and draw in a bigger crowd if we looked at it also as a long range planning effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson?
Well, it's about time is all I can say. I'm looking forward to the opportunity and I'll be delighted to sit under a tree and have a meal. So I'm all for it. I think it's a good idea and I do think it's time that we do this, give our local businesses an opportunity to begin to roll again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, we'll go on to the roll call for this item then. Emily? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Wyder?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And Ron, back to you for just a moment. We have made an extended effort to make sure that all of the businesses are aware of these new opportunities, right?
That's correct. We've emailed each one of the businesses. We posted a news flash on the website and we've attempted to call every business. In some cases, we've had to leave messages and are in the process of following up with them. But intent is to communicate directly via phone with every business to make sure they're aware of it, they have any questions about it, and also to solicit any other issues or concerns that they think the city may be able to help them with that we should be considering.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item 7B. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
Alderman Goodman, I will make the motion for item 7B. I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2020-35, according to First Amendment to the agreement between the city of Warrenville and Crystal Maintenance Services Corporation for the provision of cleaning services.
Second by Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Alderman. And we will go to Assistant City Administrator White for this explanation of this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Traditionally, the city's cleaning company comes in on Monday, Wednesday and Friday evening to clean the city hall building, police building and public works building. Obviously with COVID-19, as we prepare to reopen and return employees back to work and having more foot traffic in the buildings, we felt that it was important to increase the cleanings to five days a week, at least for the time being, and likely through the end of this calendar year, to be reassessed again. Hopefully at some point we get past COVID-19 and there are treatments widely available. We may not need to have those five days a week cleanings, but that will be reevaluated at a later time. For now, we're asking the council to consider the additional expense, which is roughly just shy of $12,000 for the remainder of the calendar year.
And I would presume that there are going to be special requirements for our cleaning going forward?
They have begun disinfecting more of the common spaces, wiping down light switches, wiping down door handles. That will continue. We've been in constant contact with the cleaning company and providing feedback whenever needed. But they've been very helpful and diligent about responding to our concerns and making sure that they're doing everything they can to help us keep surfaces clean.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the Alderman then for comments or questions, beginning with Alderman Ashauer?
No comment.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Berry?
No comment.
Okay, Alderman Bavir?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
Just one quick question. Have the cleaning services been continuing at the same rate despite the closure of some city buildings? I'm especially thinking city hall.
Yes, the rates have not changed because the schedule has been the same even with the business, sorry, the offices being closed. We do have people on site at all of the buildings. So even though we've been closed to the public, we do have staff that are on site regularly every day. So we've continued the current cleaning schedule throughout the closure.
Okay, so there's been more cleaning relative to the per person using the areas at least, I suppose. So that's a good thing. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Wyder?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. And Alderman Wilson?
Nothing to add.
All right, thank you. Roll call then, please. Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wyder?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
And motion carries. So we'll move on then to item 7C. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
Alderman Berry, I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and authorize city of Warrenville personnel to complete the acquisition of the former Citco gas station property at 28W 244 Warrenville Road and implement the actions required to obtain a partially forgivable brownfield revolving loan funding agreement for the property from U.S. and Illinois Environmental Protection Agencies.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Thank you. We're going to have a presentation by Community and Economic Development Director Mensur. The presentation slides are available on the city website. If you're following along from home, go to wwwwarrenville-il.us, scroll down to the calendar, click on the June 1st city council meeting, and then click on the 6-01-20 Citco Property Purchase Presentation and you'll be able to follow along with us there. So Ron, over to you.
Thank you again, Mayor. Again, the main focus of this agenda item and my presentation is to explain and then have the city council take action on the staff recommendation to move forward acquisition of the former Citco property there at the corner of Batavia and Warrenville Road at this time. Before I move forward and kind of get into the basis and rationale behind staff's recommendation, I did want to provide some context to the property and the city's involvement with the property and how we got to where we are tonight. At the end of, it was at the very end of 2015 or maybe the first couple of weeks in 2016, the current owners of the property acquired the property in a package of gas stations that they purchased out of a bankruptcy proceedings. They operated the gas station for three or four months, quickly realized that it wasn't an economically viable business and they closed the gas station operation. A couple of months after that, they reached out to the city and inquired whether the city was interested in the possible acquisition of the property. And that really began the city's involvement in the property as it currently exists. City council authorized staff to negotiate, try to attempt to negotiate a purchase contract that was acceptable to the city. So for the better part of the last three years, we've been involved on again, off again in negotiations with the property owner to get the property under contract. Those negotiations culminated last October. October 2nd, the city council approved a detailed purchase agreement for the property. Since that purchase agreement was approved, city staff, city's environmental consultant, environmental attorney and the city's redevelopment attorney have been actively performing all kinds of due diligence investigations on the property to not only understand the, the conditions of the property, but the constraints associated with the property that would need to be dealt with in order to reuse the property in a form that's more consistent with what the city's expectations and long-term plans are, and also to evaluate the liability exposure that the city would be assuming if it ultimately take ownership of the property. Back in early February, we staff provider fairly detailed presentation to the city council. It summarized the findings that we came up with after doing all the additional site investigation activities on the property to more clearly define the scope of contamination on the property, the actions that would be necessary to be taken in order to deal with that contamination, the costs associated with purchasing the property and cleaning it up, and then finally, the type of liability exposure the city would inherit if it purchased the property, and then an initial cost estimate on what all those costs would be. In early April, we had a follow-up discussion and presentation with the city council to update the cost estimate information. We talked about a, and presented an initial funding plan of how the city could potentially fund the acquisition and cleanup costs on this property. And since that period of time, we've been refining the funding plan and exploring opportunities for additional outside funding, which I'll touch on at the very end of my presentation. So that leads me to talking about, I think it's really important to kind of provide some context to the staff recommendation by revisiting and reminding everybody what the current conditions and constraints are on the property. Because the fact of the matter is that they really played a significant role in the staff recommendations forward at this point in time. I know I drive by the property on a regular basis, probably four, five times a week at least, and you kind of lose track of it. It kind of just blends into the landscape. But the fact of the matter is, is that when you stop and you take a look at it, the property is dilapidated. A bunch of rundown buildings and site improvements and very little investment into the property over the last 25 years. I think every year, the property generally has become in more degraded shape. There's a lot of, not a lot, there's a number of existing building code and property maintenance code violations on the property that remain and continually unaddressed. The existing buildings are not occupiable because of their current condition. There's asbestos materials in the buildings that needs to be remediated. And then finally, last but not least, from kind of an existing site character standpoint, about 45% of the property is either covered with dilapidated buildings and structures or pavement, pavement surfaces that's in need of some type of attention. Yeah, that is so far from what the city's current regulations and long-term plans call for in this part of the community. We would never allow anything like this to happen again, but it does exist in its current form. From a, I think we all know that there's quite a bit of environmental conditions on the property that would have to be addressed. There's leaking underground storage tank issues that date back to the late 90s that would have to be addressed. There's heavy metal contamination in the soils and the groundwater underneath. Uh, there's heavy metal so contamination in the soils and the groundwater underneath the site that would need to be addressed if a portion of the site was going to be converted into some type of use. From a regulatory standpoint, government regulations, uh, more than half of the site is located within the 100-year floodplain. Um, the area that the existing convenient or former convenience store building occupies and the area of the site where the underground storage tanks are located are all within the 100-year floodplain area of the site. Um, that could never happen under today's development codes and standards. Uh, in fact, if, uh, somebody was to reuse and start investing into the convenience center building, um, they'd have to deal with some pretty stringent regulations that FEMA has established, and, uh, very quickly could be required to either demolish the building, raise the building, or, uh, invest in the floodproofing of the, uh, existing building so that it wouldn't be impacted by future floods. I think there's, it's also important to, to, uh, remember that there's the existing underground storage tanks that are, that remain on the property have been condemned by the Office of State Fire Marshal, and under that condemnation order, uh, they need to be removed. Uh, they can't be replaced, and if they're not removed, there'll be fines that will be levied against the property. And if those fines are not paid, it will be levied against the property. Uh, and then finally, last not, not least, from a legal, legal or quasi-legal perspective, I think it's important to recognize that, um, two years of back property taxes have not been paid on the property. I'm assuming that the first installment of the 2019 taxes haven't been paid either. Um, and assuming that's the case, and the 2019 taxes are not paid this season, there'll be three years of back tax hold on the property along with the, um, penalties and interest associated with those payments. Uh, the city also has leaned the property for over $20,000 worth of outstanding property maintenance and building code fines, that violation fines that have accrued against the property because of the current owner's inability or, uh, lack of action to address those code enforcement actions or code enforcement violations. So the reality, but there's a lot of, uh, conditions and constraints on the property that, um, are, you know, I don't know that they're all complex, but collectively, it's a, a pile of stuff that would be dealt with in order for something positive to happen on this property going forward. So to hope provides some understanding of why staff is recommending that, uh, we move forward with the purchase of this property at this point in time. I thought one of the ways to do that effectively was to, to consider how the property would look in three or five years if the city did not get involved versus if the city was to get involved with it. I think it's safe to say, I'm not gonna go through all these in, in a whole lot of detail, but, uh, safe to say that, um, there's been very little private investment and improvement on the property for the past 25 years, um, given the fact that all these constraints and issues exist with the property. I, I believe firmly that, um, the physical conditions on the property will continue to deteriorate. I don't see any way that the private sector is gonna find a way to improve those conditions. Uh, it's very unlikely that anything will be done by the current property owner to deal with the underground storage tanks on the property, any of the subsurface contamination on the property. So as a result, I think it's a safe, uh, bet that in the next three to five years, there'll be no positive economic activity that will be occurring on this property if it doesn't, if the city doesn't get involved and take control of it. Uh, what that means for the areas that it's very like, it's very unlikely that there'll be redevelopment on this property or on the adjacent vacant property that the city owns. It's gonna be awful hard to attract any private redevelopment investment on the city property with a very uncertain, unclear future on the gas station property and then also the dilapidated condition of the gas station property. Historically, more so lately than, um, 20 years ago, the gas station property in its current condition really acts as a deterrent to other private investment in the surrounding area. I regularly with, um, owners of other possible development or redevelopment properties in the Old Town area of our community, and they all, that they all, but most of them express significant frustration with the gas station property and are convinced that in its current state, it prevents private investment from being attracted to their properties. And then finally, last but not least, without city involvement, I think it's no path, no opportunity to convert a portion of this property to public open space, some larger, um, park trail amenity on, on the west side of the river. With the city ownership of the property, certainly within the, the next year, the city would, um, take care of the under, and remove the existing underground storage tanks on the property. Uh, the fiscal year '21 budget that was approved by the city council includes funding to make that happen and to acquire the property for that matter. Um, it's, uh, likely that they will find the funding and make, uh, make it possible that the existing structures, dilapidated structures on the property would be raised in the next two years, and we'd be able to move forward with the remediation of the various subsurface contaminants on the property and remediate it to a residential versus a, the more stringent residential standards versus the commercial industrial standards that, um, a private sector individual or business probably would end up doing. The end result, from my perspective, is that in three or four years from now, if the city owns the property and is committed to the property, the property will be ready to support desirable private redevelopment and, uh, support a public park open space use on the floodplain portion of the property. So why the city? Why does the city need to get involved from the, I think it's pretty clear, well, maybe not to everybody, but to myself, that all the constraints and issues that I've talked about, have talked about, um, to, to this point, really make it impractical, unfeasible from an economic standpoint for the private sector to deal with all those issues and still have a project that makes economic sense. There's just not enough potential return on investment or the amount of time, energy, effort, and money that would need to be invested in dealing with all those issues in order to make it worthwhile from the private sector perspective. And, you know, that's a big part of why it's the way it is and, and why there hasn't been a lot of, uh, private sector interest in doing anything positive on the property. On the other hand, the city, we possess the knowledge, experience, and funding resources necessary to address these issues. Um, we spent the better part of the last seven months performing an enormous amount of due diligence activities on the property, communicating with, uh, the Office of State Fire Marshal and the various entities in the that would be involved with, uh, the cleanup and funding of the cleanup of this particular property to understand what it's gonna take, uh, to do all that. Um, we have experience in doing that already. Um, only, one only has to look at the former Musselman property, which a lot of similarities to this particular property, to see what can happen when the private sector won't do something that, uh, is really, um, um, not cost-effective from the private sector standpoint. The municipality or the city in that case took the time, energy, and effort and invested that to make that project happen, and I think we can and have the ability to do the same thing with the Citco property. And then finally, there are, there are a, a, a series of funding resources, um, or sources that are available to the city that aren't generally available to the private sector that make it more feasible for the city to make something like this make sense from a financial perspective over the long term. Uh, and that's kind of the final, uh, point in the, the slide. Uh, we have access to, uh, TIF 3 funds. Uh, the city has reserved, uh, so far about a, just short of a million dollars with the park cash contributions that could be used to help pay for the acquisition costs and the cleanup costs associated with acquiring and preparing that portion of the site that would ultimately be turned into a park. Um, and we also have the ability to tap into a U.S. and Illinois IEP-A brownfields cleanup revolving loan fund that is not available to the private sector. But before concluding here, I just wanted to touch on some of the high points of the, the financial considerations here. As we've discussed in the past, the conservative estimate of the total, uh, cost to acquire the property and clean it up and deal with all the outstanding, uh, conditions on the property and make it available for both private redevelopment and public open space improvement would be about $1.25 million, uh, based on the, uh, outside funding assistance that is available that the city can tap into. Uh, we're anticipating that the city's share of those, that $1.25 million will be somewhere in the neighborhood or range of $468,000 to $888,000, depending on the actual amount of, um, expenses incurred to deal with all these issues and the final amounts of outsides, outside funding assistance that we ultimately do receive. One portion of the city's staff recommendation is to move forward with steps necessary to acquire a no-interest, partially forgivable brownfield, uh, assistance revolving, uh, loan from the U.S. and IEP-A. That the property is eligible for up to $690,000 worth of, uh, brownfield revolving loan funding, of which $200,000 would be forgivable. Um, the challenge with defining exactly what, uh, level of funding that we would be able to tap in and confirm that is the way that program is structured. You can't finalize the agreement with the Illinois, the U.S. and Illinois IEP-A until you actually own the property. You enroll the property in the Illinois EPA voluntary site remediation plan. You submit a detailed cleanup plan, and the state approves that cleanup plan and the costs associated with that cleanup plan, and then you can enter into an agreement of, under which they would provide revolving loan funds to help, uh, pay for those costs. Um, generally, those revolving loan funds are, again, are not generally, currently, there are no interest funds, um, that would be able to be repaid over a seven to 10-year period with future revenues that generated by the site, by the TIF district, or some other source such as, uh, park, uh, developer contributions. And $200,000 of those, the funds that we ultimately do use would be, will be relieved. We also, or I would also like to recognize that we've been making, uh, positive progress with, uh, TIF 66 and the latest, um, financial contribution that they're willing to provide to us. It's $75,000 to help deal with the outstanding, um, help deal with and close out the outstanding less incident, whoops, less incident that dates back to 1998. So that brings me to the staff recommendations. Um, uh, we are recommending strongly that the city council authorize us to complete the acquisition of the property and implement various actions necessary to, uh, move forward and finalize, uh, RLF, brownfields assistance, uh, funding with the U.S. and IEP-A. Um, I would also recognize that, um, I do have, we do have our environmental consultant that's been working closely with staff on the, uh, investigations that were, that have happened and occurred on this property and defining the, the type of work that needs to be done to address all the environmental conditions on the line and available for any questions related to, um, that, the cleanup type issue that will be taken care of on the property. With that, I will go up for questions.
Thank you, Ron, for your comprehensive, as always, presentation. Uh, we'll go through the list of Alderman again for comments and or questions, um, and see where we can go with this. We'll begin with Alderman Ashauer. Alderman? Are, are you muted? Alderman Ashauer?
I'm sorry. Anyway, I, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It hasn't, hasn't converted me. Um, I have particular issues with the, uh, amount of park district funds we've decided to use on this project. It probably wouldn't even be happening without that. When I was pursuing the park district, strongly opposed using those funds that way. Anyway, I, I also.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Berry?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. Um, first, I'm definitely, um, agreeing to the purchase of this property at this time. Uh, we, we need to remove the eyesore at that corner. I drive by it twice a day, and, um, right now, there's probably anywhere from 15 to 20, 25 cars parked on that property. Um, I don't understand how it's become a parking lot. Um, we do, first of all, the, the underground tanks, and then in that second is to tear down the, uh, pretty ready, uh, as a three to four-year project, and this is just the beginning of that project. Um, you know, we've worked on two different developments. The first one was the, uh, property next to the library, and we went through this whole issue at that time. And now we've got the Citco property, and we know what we're doing. We've done it the first time. We can do it a second time, and I think this gives us a, um, a reputation for doing the right thing, doing the right thing for, um, our residents, uh, making sure that we are, uh, caretakers of the city, of the property that we own, um, that we take care of it, uh, to the point where we need to clean it up to make it safe for them, uh, make it safe for people who possibly want to, uh, maybe put up some residences, uh, make it a, uh, park space, and, um, I think that this is going to get a large backing from the community, because, uh, I have heard for many years that we need to do something about that because it's, it just is an eyesore, and it is, it's, it's not safe anymore for our community for that to be there, like, and for that property to be contaminated and as rundown as the way it is. Okay, and I'd definitely be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bavir?
Yes, I'm, uh, not in favor of this project, and I would have liked to have seen it where people could have come into the audience and actually made their comments, but that ain't happening right now. It'd been nice if it was postponed till people could come in and make their comments, but, uh, I'm not in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, um, I have a couple of comments and one question. Um, I guess I'll just make my comments really quickly. Based on the presentation tonight, I, I actually don't think, I, I am very much in favor of this. In fact, I am passionately in favor of this because I think the time is right, the iron is hot. I think we will never get it as cheaply as we will get it now. It's always gonna have costs associated with it, and we can plan for those, but I've, um, you know, talked to people about the idea of a bankruptcy could happen, and, and we could get, it would be more costly, and I just don't see it ever getting cheaper. And so I would just rather get this piece of property owned by the city. When I drove by Saturday, well, I get a lot of comments, because it's in Ward 3, so I get a lot of comments on this and why people have a, a great misunderstanding that the city can do anything about how that looks because we don't own it. And I'm constantly explaining that sort of thing to people. And Saturday I drove by, not only were there cars, but a couple of them had for-sale signs in the windows, and I thought, oh my God, and now we're selling cars out of there. So there's just nothing we can do until we own it. And, um, I, everybody knows how I feel about thinking that there's nobody but the city. This is what, this is what municipalities do well. They have to plan for it. The private sector is not gonna take this. They do not care about a public walkway, and they would probably asphalt- They do not care about a public walkway and they would probably asphalt over, floodplain, I don't know, but they're not going to have a nice park or a nice walkway or pay to connect it anywhere. That part is just gone. And for all this happened to the river and all the good things that have happened to the river, that would actually break my heart. I'm also, I was impressed in this, in this presentation tonight in thinking about the surrounding businesses. And I, I knew it was tough, but I really, I really think part of my job is to support the business community and I hadn't really thought deeply about how they must be feeling and how they perhaps may not even want to invest in their own properties. Nothing's going to expand down there. There's so much potential for that corner and it will never happen with, with that gas station as it is now, still, still there. Let me see, I guess that's, I don't want to go and repeat everything Ron already said, but I just don't think the private sector will ever do this for the benefit of, of our community. It just will not happen and we're not going to agree to a lot of things on there because, because we will have some say on what goes on there as well as the plan commission. And so I just don't think there's anything cheap that can go on there and we wouldn't probably agree with it anyway. So those are my comments. My question is about the TIF issue here, this part about TIF. I may have have a miss, possess a misunderstanding about TIF dollars. I thought my, well, my understanding was that the TIF dollars that were generated by a piece of property, like let's say Stafford Place property. Those TIF dollars had to go back to pay back the debt on that property and they couldn't be given to any other part of the TIF area. But after reading the comment in the backup, I think I may have a misunderstanding about how TIF dollars are allocated. So maybe, maybe Ron or Kevin or somebody can just comment on how, once we accrue those TIF dollars, how they get distributed legally because of the way the TIF is set up.
Okay, Ron, Ron, if you'd like to.
Just some initial comments and Kevin may want to have some further details to add. They, ultimately, the way the TIF revenue is generated and then used is controlled by state statute, which basically establishes the types of things you can use TIF revenue for and cannot use it for. There's nothing in the state statute that defines how TIF revenue generated by a specific property is used for that property or other properties. It doesn't say that you can only use TIF revenue from a, from a specific property for costs associated with, TIF costs associated with that property. Ultimately, it's the city council's decision on how the TIF revenue that's generated throughout the district is allocated used. Now that being said, the city does have a significant amount of deficit that it has accumulated in TIF III that does need to be repaid over the life of TIF. When we are working through the process to evaluate the redevelopment of Civic Center redevelopment site number one, we estimated how long or how much TIF revenue would be generated by that project should it move forward and get redeveloped in a form that's similar to what has happened in a timeframe similar as what has happened. And the, the fact of the matter is that over the life of the TIF, there's going to be a significant amount of excess TIF revenue over and above what would be necessary to repay the TIF, the debt that's owed to the TIF for all the expenses that the city's incurred as part of that project. There's other development that's occurred, that is occurring in the TIF district. There's natural appreciation that has occurred in the TIF district. In the backup, you might note, and I think it was in the recently weekly report, that in 2020, the city has been notified that it will receive over $200,000 worth of TIF III revenue, that it will have to make a decision on how it's going to use those TIF revenues. So the, the decision of how much TIF revenue and when that TIF revenue might be applied to this particular property is part of a larger discussion and decision process that the city council will have to have. One of the things we talked about during the early parts of the, the budget process and leading up to when the whole COVID-19 thing went down is coming up with a detailed projection of the TIF revenues that are going to be created in both TIF III and TIF IV over the remaining life of those TIF districts so that the city council could ultimately endorse ABA schedules to repay the debt that one of those TIF districts have. So those are discussions that are going to happen in the, you know, coming months. But the fact of the matter is, is there's going to be significantly more TIF revenue in TIF III created based on the valuation that already exists in the TIF district than what's necessary to repay the debt that is accumulated against that TIF district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Kevin, have you got anything you'd like to add? The finance director, Kevin Dollstrand?
No, I do not have anything additional to add. Director Mensah laid that out extremely well. I just want to point, point, point out that when we did approve the budget and a lot has happened since then, but we did project that at the end of fiscal 21, that that TIF fund number three would owe approximately $3.8 million to other funds. So I just wanted to make sure I got that out there.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. I find this last discussion about TIP III interesting. I have the budget in front of me and on page 260, which is the page that lays out the activity in the TIP III fund, it estimates $150,000 in TIP revenue, not $215,000. Perhaps you're talking about calendar year 2020 and not the fiscal year, but we're looking ahead to fiscal year 2021, that's still about $65,000 that you're claiming more than what it says. And what you're not including is that the budget also has a overall $350,000 for the year because of $514,000 of budgeted expenses. So saying that there's $214,000 in TIP III revenue that the city needs to decide how to spend when there's $4 million, according to page 260, the end fund balance is over $4 million deficit in the red, a multimillion dollar existing negative balance. Even before the recent financial crisis, our projections for that fund was over $4 million in negative. So $200,000 a year is nice, but hardly makes a dent in that even when you multiply by 20 years. And I don't think that there are 20 years left in that TIF fund. And I know that there's going to be additional development and hopefully additional revenues in that fund from Stafford Place and from Warrenville Horizon project. But saying that all $214,000 in TIP incremental tax distributions from 2020 would be available for this project, especially when it says $150,000, not $215,000 in the budget seems confusing to me. Can anyone clarify that?
I would say, my perspective, if I gave the impression that I'm suggesting that all $216,000 or any portion of the $216,000 that we're set to receive in 2020 would be applied to this project, that's not what I meant to suggest. And if I insinuated that, I apologize. I was just pointing out that already, yeah, I was trying to make the point in the, the backup for this agenda item is that already with only one-third of the Stafford Place project actually assessed that we're receiving $216,000, which I believe is more than what we projected when we put together the budget based on actual remittance projections that have been more recently provided by the county.
Okay, back to you, Alderman.
Okay, I don't know if Finance Director Dollstrand was trying to say anything.
Well, no, I was going to add the same, same thing. When we assembled this budget, the projection in there at $157,000 was just that, a projection. We did not have any of the final extension numbers yet for, 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 for the county. And I actually just received the, the final extension numbers today. I did put an item in the weekly report late, last week indicating what those numbers would be. So I think that's where the little bit of the confusion is, is that we did not have the final numbers at the time this was assembled.
Okay, city staff identified two other key funding sources in addition to the TIP III revenue in the memo that we're looking at here in our backup. The first was city reserve park cash contributions. And in my opinion, every dollar that we spend on this project from those park contributions is money that could be used for existing city parks and for planned trails and parks like the Trail Alongback Road, Maple Hill Connection, the Route 59 sidewalks, et cetera. And the third item that's identified here is a key funding source for the city's share of the project cost is the Brent Field revolving loan funding. And as for that, the last time we got a forgivable brownfield revolving loan, that reimbursement was never received, as I'm sure you all remember. As Director Mensah said at the beginning of his presentation, this idea really began back in 2015 when we started dealing with these owners after they acquired this property in a bankruptcy sale. And the things that they promised at the time made it seem like a very attractive project. I agree with many of the things that Director Mensah said about the city being able to have a unique approach to projects like this that aren't available to the private sector. That was why at the time that project seemed so attractive and why I supported it at key moments and why we moved forward with this project to this point. But when the situation changes, we also need to change. Our uncertain budget is going to mean some very tough choices and the very easiest one would be to cut this project. The information that staff has given us has convinced me that we can move forward with this project later when our financial condition improves as a city, that there will not be intervening activity that would take that choice away from us. And perhaps at that future time, there would be more trustworthy owners who would be easier to work with. So given our current financial condition, given the many changes to this project that have made it less attractive, you've heard me speak about it before, so I won't go in to all of those details over the last several years of negotiations with these people. But I cannot support this project at this time, much as I would like to see the end result that we've envisioned in our many plans for this property. I hope we could do it someday. I do not think we need to do it today. I do not think that there is urgency to do it today and I do not think we can afford to do it today.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
Yeah, thanks. Just a couple of things. You know, I think the majority of the residents that I've spoken to, you know, continue to ask when the city is going to do something about that property. I did speak to a couple that were against it, but far and large, the, the majority of residents that I've been in contact with are looking forward to something better at that corner. In fact, I brought a coworker into, into town. First time he was in Warrenville and came down the hill and the first thing he said was, what do you, what is that? And what are you going to, why can't you do something about it? Which obviously generated the conversation about, you know, explaining the situation and why it is the way it is. I think the city also has a social obligation that, you know, knowing what's on that property, what's under that property, you know, and having the opportunity to clean it up, I think, I think that's an obligation that, that we should take seriously, you know, as a city and, and especially if we have the, the resources available such as the, the funding, the grants, that stuff. The only reservation that I have moving forward is due to the timing. Obviously, you know, we had recent conversations about, you know, sharpening our pencils and taking a look at all the expenses that we have. However, looking at this project funding plan, it's in the backup material. You know, I think, you know, I'm confident with the FY '21. And looking forward to the expenses throughout the project. I, I think it's a good plan. And so I am in, in favor of this, this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, I agree with Alderman Kreschel that this is a dismal first appearance that you see as you come in and I guess recognize it as the gateway to our community.
I see it on your face. I already see it. I know it's going to happen. Do not think for a minute.
I think we're getting some overlap from someone, but anyway.
I just needed you.
Okay, go ahead, Alderman.
Anyway, it's, I agree with Alderman Kreschel. It's a very dismal first appearance as a gateway to our community. One of the first things we did when I was elected way back in 2005 was Ron, Director Mensah led kind of a citywide busy visioning effort. And we hired Friedman consultants and invited a lot of community members in to look at a map of the city and, and evaluate the different areas and what would be improvements to the community. And it seemed like everyone who looked at this area recognized it for two people, two reasons. Its viability, you know, as a high-quality commercial area, that potential was immediately recognized as you came into the community. And two, it was also recognized by many people who came in that we wanted to highlight the river, that that was really kind of the jumpstone of the community to be able to reestablish a view of the river and have some additional green space and places to play for, for the residents. I think it's an appropriate use of the park district cash contributions because I don't recall any park spaces being added in the past 20 years. And during that time, we've probably added 2,000 to 4,000 residents to our community. So it seems like what the Park District ordinance was set up for was to establish more park space as a community grew. And that's exactly what this effort to purchase this property will, will accomplish. And I know from working with Ron, you know, for all these years, that he's always highly successful at obtaining outside funding. I can't think of a project where he hasn't been able to pull together a lot of different partners and funding sources in order to make the least impact to this, to the city tax, taxpayers. And also, I can't, when he recommends a, a good plan, a community planning initiative, he is seldom wrong. And I think the results speak for themselves when you look around our community and, and see some of the projects that Ron has recommended and implemented over, over the, you know, 15 or 16 years. So I'm strongly in favor of this. It'll improve the walkability of our community and it'll give residents an opportunity to, to visit more, more open areas. And it will also improve property values as we remove this dilapidated site and clean up what's underneath. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson?
Okay, well, there's all, I agree with an awful lot of things that have been said pro and con, but I'm in favor of this system. We've looked at this before and I thank Ron very much for putting together this informational folder that we got to consider on this final day. A couple of things, and one thing that Bill had just said was, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Widener, said was about the park district, you know, using those funds that we set aside from the park district contributions will be going into this project when we get to that point of having ownership and our ability to do. ability to do with it what we will, what we wish. The other thing about it is the fact that, uh, I would, how much did we pay for those two buildings that we bought on Batavia Road with the understanding that those pieces of property were going to be or could be combined with the Sitco property as a development process? And, uh, if that's not, can someone confirm that, that that's what we had agreed to when we bought those two buildings? How much did we pay for those two homes on Batavia Road?
Ron, you have that number?
To, to purchase and then, uh, do the follow-up demolition work on it and the various consulting and legal costs, we used right around $700,000.
Now, so we have invested $700,000 in two pieces of property. And unless we go forth and develop the Sitco property, how are we gonna recoup that $750,000 that we've already spent, already purchased? So this is all part of the development of the Sitco property that we had talked about way back when. So I think that it's a, I like the prices, the, the figures that were given. We have that, we have that, and those figures have to be included in the cost that we've already spent to develop this entire property. And the fact that this happens to be a bad year for us financially, you have to look at the long-term purposes of this. We've been like five years trying to decide what to do, whether or not we should buy it or not. The fact that this happens to be a bad fiscal year should not stop us from continuing to look forward and to do what we need to get done with that piece of property that is an eyesore to everyone that I have ever spoken to about it. So I think it's time for us to make this decision. The money will be there. Our optimum, opti- opportunity is there, and we need to do it. We need to do it now. So I'm very much in favor of it and look forward to perhaps this being the final vote where we can actually go with the Sitco property. So thank you very much, Ron. Thank you for the information that you gave us.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, before we go to the vote, is there anyone who would like a second bite at the apple? It seems like everyone's made their position pretty clear, but I'd be certainly willing to entertain additional comments if anyone would like to make them. So just identify yourself and, uh, give us your perspective if you're so inclined. All right.
Just one comment.
Okay.
Yeah. Just wanted to, uh, point out the fact that with all the concern I've heard about the value of the property and the importance of it and the eyesore and the whole works, that many of the people that, that, um, on the council made a conscious choice to not protect much of that property when they had an opportunity to burn it and take, um, a great deal out of the 100-year floodplain and make it a much more developable and viable piece of property. Um, I think that's part of what has caused the degradation we've seen and part of why I don't support it. I don't think the way we've done this has been right.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, just a, a couple of comments, um, before I ask for the vote. Um, from my personal perspective, um, of all the things since I've been involved in city government that people have brought up to me over the years, uh, the one at the top of the list that brought most of the comments from folks was this particular property. And the comment invariably was, "What is going on there and why doesn't the city do something about it?". Um, I think Alderman, Alderman Crishol made a, a, a good observation. Uh, when you come down the hill and you pull into Warrenville, the first thing you see is an abandoned property, and that's the impression that people get of our town. Um, I think, uh, community development and the, uh, Development Director Mensah made a good point in that if we don't do something about this, if the community doesn't do it, uh, it will remain that way indefinitely. So this will be the impression that people get of our community as they enter our community. Um, we have the opportunity to do this. We've discussed it, uh, many, many times. Um, if the community doesn't do it, it won't happen. Uh, this is what communities do. Uh, we took certainly the property between, uh, um, City Hall and the library and turned it in, uh, took it from a contaminated property, industrial property, and turned it into a delightful little neighborhood. Um, this is the type of thing that people expect us to do. Uh, currently, the property, uh, that was the Strezny property is being redeveloped. Again, it was an abandoned restaurant that's been erased. It's gonna be replaced by a very, very nice development, another thing that would not have happened without our involvement. So these are the types of things that we do. These are what make Warrenville a better place. Um, and I'm certainly, uh, hopeful that the council will see their way clear to make this purchase tonight. Um, this is not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna happen over a period of time, but the first step would be tonight to acquire the property so we control it. And moving ahead, we can make sure that it becomes a, a better part of the community than it is now or would ever be without our involvement. So, that having been said, um, let's do a roll call. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Crishol?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
Alderman Goodman?
Nay.
Alderman Vier?
Nay.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. That settles that. Let's go on to our last item on the agenda this evening, item 7D. Would someone please make that motion?
Alderman Davalos, I would like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and approve the return to work and reopen plan effective immediately.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, Alderman. And we'll again have Assistant City Admini- uh, excuse me, the City Admini- we're gonna do it now.
Me.
They're fighting over this one.
Go for it.
All right. It's been punted back to the City Administrator, John Coakley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start, and then Christina may want to fill in some of the details that we need to, uh, but I know we just had a couple of long discussions, so I'll see if I can move this along. Uh, the details of the plan for reopening and the return to work for our employees, uh, as we talked about at the very beginning of the meeting, uh, we have been, city buildings have been closed. Many, many of our employees that do direct outside services, police, public works have been here every day just on their regular schedules and, and as needed. Some of our employees have been on-site, but many have been working remotely. We are working towards returning them, uh, at least in a phase-in process towards when we will reopen, along with everything else in the state slowly, safely as possible. Uh, the packet includes information about those days we're looking to the reopening of Police Building and City Hall where public normally would come into on June 15th. I want to point out, usually the hours and operations of the city are delegated in the police department largely to the police chief and the other city departments to the city administrator, um, just by practice, by ordinance, by, um, the position assignments. But there's a lot of things involved here that I want to make sure, we want to make sure that the council is supportive of and on board with. In addition to the fact, there's been so many major changes going on, and this is a big change, even the reopening and phasing in, a big change to, uh, our, what was our normal operations back in early March and February if we've backed that far now. Uh, some of the most significant, uh, and again, we'll start some phased-in hours so that we have time to get adapted, uh, and, uh, have the public, uh, limited access to the public for both their safety and our own. Uh, we don't want, uh, anything to spread because of our efforts if we can help it. Uh, as you may have heard about, uh, or may be aware, I don't know if anybody has been in the building, uh, during off-hours, but we have done many improvements to the building. As you'll note, in the policy or in the, uh, plans, there are already barriers that are put up of plexiglass. They're very attractive. Our staff, our employees did a very good job with them. Uh, and all the front counters, including the counter, customer service counter and administration, along with some new separators between workstations. There's signage, there's, uh, even tape markings to show people where to stand and wait so that we don't, so we maintain social distancing and don't get inadvertently too close. Some of the primary things that are, um, important to note is that face coverings, social distancing will be required of employees, of customers, residents who come to the building, of contractors who are working here, as well as elected officials who may visit the building. We all have to keep each other safe and make sure we're following the CDC guidelines and all of the Restore Illinois, uh, phase plans. This will not track exactly with Phase 3. Uh, as you'll notice, Phase 3 started in Illinois, uh, last week, at the end of the week. We are opening slowly. Uh, we're not tied to those exact timeframes. We are an essential business. We did not have to close at all. Uh, we did so to make sure that we did our part to protect the employees and the public and, and again, did not add to the spread of this, uh, of illness. I wanted to give those comments as an overview because it is important. Uh, again, you delegate that normally to, uh, the hours and operations and service levels to, uh, except for the macro sense and the budgeting, of course, uh, the policy sense. Once those are set, you, you usually delegate those to the police chief and to me, uh, to make those decisions. But there's so many parts to this, I want to make sure the council's involved, aware, and then it also adds some enforcement ability, uh, with the council supporting the plan and approving it. Uh, with that, Christina, did you have something that I missed?
No, I think you covered it. Thank you.
This is the first time for everybody. Thank you.
Little competition always helps.
I think she's done enough.
All right, uh, we'll give everyone a chance then to comment or to question the City Administrator on this last item, beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Vier.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
No comment, except I appreciate staff in doing all this to keep us all safe, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Goodman?
Uh, yes, on page four of the return to work reopening plan, you say that when we enter Phase 4, uh, the city council and committee of the whole in-person meetings will be able to resume, but there's a note at the bottom saying that city volunteer advisory boards and commissions are going to continue to meet. Uh, can I express a, a concern about including the Plan Commission into the in-person meetings once we shift to Phase 4? As a former member of the Plan Commission, happily served on the Plan Commission for six years, the citizens' participation and transparency involved in having in-person meetings at the Plan Commission level seems like a very important consideration to me. I know that there are gonna be a lot of social distancing measures that might discourage a lot of in-person participation by citizens, but I think we should reconsider that portion of this plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you guys understand?
I didn't get all of that, so I didn't make it.
City Administrator Coakley?
I'm sorry, I'm not running this meeting. Um, Alderman, you're, you're, to clarify, you, you faded out a little bit as you were talking. Your question is, why don't we have the Plan Commission zoning board in the same status, basically, as the city council when we reopen in Phase 4 to hold in-person meetings for the Plan Commission at the same point? Is that correct?
That's correct, because I think that transparency and access to in-person meetings by our residents, it is greatly improved when we can have them at City Hall even with social distancing measures in place as opposed to electronic meeting.
Okay. Assistant City Administrator White?
Okay, uh, so under Phase 2 of the city's reopening plan, which, which lines up, as City Administrator said, generally with Phase 4 of the Governor's Restore Illinois Plan, both Committee of the Whole and Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meetings would resume in person with restrictions for social distancing. So that would happen at the same time. Um, and then into Phase 3, which would line loosely, um, with the rest, with the, I'm sorry, hold on, let me, I'm confusing myself.
Get two more sets of phases here.
Phase 5. Right, so Phase 3 of our plan, um, does not necessarily tie to Phase 5 of the Governor's Plan, but Phase 2 of our plan does. So when we get into Phase 2 and we're into Phase 4 of the Restore Illinois Plan, both the Committee of the Whole meetings and the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meetings will resume in person, and that's when we can have up to 50 people gathering in person. So we will have to limit the space because obviously sometimes the Plan Commission meetings have very meaty subjects. We have a lot of people participating, and we'll have to figure out ways that we can have that participation while maintaining social distancing.
Okay.
Okay, so I think a note at the end of page 14 of the plan might be misleading, and perhaps that just needs to be corrected. That's why I was sure.
Okay, uh, we'll take a look at that and make sure that it's not contradictory.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up. Anything else? Alderman Goodman, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Alderman Crishol?
Uh, no comment.
Okay, Alderman Widener?
I have nothing, but, uh, thank you for the, uh, effort for all, all of our safety.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
Very good. Then we'll go on to a... No further comments from staff. Oh, staff has a, an additional comment. City Administrator Coakley?
Went so well the first time, I thought I'd dare it, uh, take a risk. Uh, I do, I must remember, I want to thank Christina and Alma and a, a whole lot of city staff, the senior staff and other people. There's a lot of work that went into this, trying to figure out what the right rules were. We've been working on this collectively for several weeks at least, and there's been many, many different renditions and versions. And then Phase, uh, we finally got to Phase 3 under Restore Illinois, so we were able to use that as a guide to open up. But I should have started with that because, um, I was speaking, but there was a heck of a lot of people working on this that did a lot of the yeoman's work on it, and I certainly was involved, but they did a lot of the work. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I, I, I would also recognize that the last few weeks for staff have been, um, stressful to say the least, uh, trying to keep up with a constantly changing landscape, uh, coming up with new rules based on all sorts of requirements that, uh, we don't necessarily control. So, um, my thank you also goes out to staff. They've done a, a yeoman's job in, uh, keeping us current with what needs to be done and also planning for the future. So thank you so much. Um, I guess we're on to a roll call. Alderman Berry? Alderman Berry? Alderman Berry? She's there. Somebody poke her. Alderman Berry?
Oops. I think we lost the connection.
Aye.
There we go. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Crishol?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Vier?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we're, uh, done with our agenda as we roll through it, uh, we're on to unfinished business. I would just have one, uh, additional comment at the end here. Um, we have, uh, entered Phase 3 of the Restore Illinois program, um, promulgated by the, the, uh, governor. Um, and a lot of restrictions are being relaxed, and, and hopefully this will work out well for us. I just wanted to remind everyone that even though restrictions are relaxed, it's not because the virus has gone away. It's because we've been successful in holding it off and keeping it from spreading, um, as it would have done if we've done nothing. So the reminder that I wish to give you is that it's still there, it's still dangerous. Uh, we still need to do the social distancing, the face masks, and the washing of our hands vigorously, all of those things. If we stop doing them, will give the virus an opportunity to spread again, um, in a direction that we certainly don't want to go. So please keep in mind, it's still there, um, it's still very dangerous and very contagious. So, um, take care of yourselves and remain healthy. Um, I see nothing under new business. I see no closed session necessary for this evening, so, um, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Alderman Goodman, I move to adjourn.
Alderman Widener, second.
A motion and a second, and, uh, why don't you just say it out loud?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're all there, I think.
I think so.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you and good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.